Okay, it is now 6:00 PM and we'll call to order the Tuesday, August 15th, meeting of the Planning Commission. If everyone will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peter, have you always saluted? And I'm just now noticing.
Yeah. I didn't know. It was good to see you. You're standing in the appropriate room. I was there to salute. Very good. I hear you. Good.
Well, we'd like to welcome back Commissioner Wolf to the chamber here. And we're missing one person, so we greatly appreciate you coming back now. So, all right, so let's move on to the consent, oh, roll call actually first, sorry.
Member Wolf.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Vice Chair Saragosa.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We will go on and move to the consent calendar, item one for today. Does anyone have any questions or anything to be pulled from the agenda?
I'd just like to say I appreciated the change to the signage. Guys did a nice job on cleaning that up.
All right, so if there's no changes, do I have...
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I need to abstain, I wasn't here.
All right, let the record note, Commissioner Wolf is abstaining. He was not in attendance at the prior meeting. Okay, we can skip item two. So, item three is items of interest to the public for issues that are not on the agenda. So if anyone in the audience has something they'd like to address the Planning Commission that's not on the agenda, please step forward.
I have not been here since the last occasion was the subject of the parklets being raised before you. And at that time, an issue was raised about my credibility. Mr. List suggested that he looked at the file and saw there was a petition and the date was March, and so obviously I had noticed about the subject. I've gone over that transcript very carefully. I couldn't get a court reporter to make a copy, but believe me, the issue was not my lack of clarity. I'm not sure there was a lot of attention paid to what I said. And what's much more significant is if you're going to challenge someone's integrity from the audience, say they made a misrepresentation, they were not accurate. It's significant because for a lawyer, you make a material misrepresentation, it's a grounds for disbarment. But I think it has a chilling impact for most members of the public or can. Let me tell you that it does not make sense to get a three-by-five card to come down here because of El Centro. And then before you that night when it came to a parklet, Pop Art found out about that subject being before them, that the city was going to put it in front of their property that day. They found out about it from me, and I in turn found out about it by going to the city, which is what your agenda says. You want to find out more details, go down to the city and look it up. Now, seriously, do you think that 270 people with business licenses on Main Street who will often work 60 hours a week are going to go down there and look at that extensive file and to find out that the parklet was going to be placed right in front of their business? It does great damage to their business. So why on one hand would you get specific notice about that and not the other? Now, I understand the reasons, but the point is, you have the power to change your rules. And nobody, Mr. List, ever said anything about the city failed to follow the rules. The rules either of the city or your rules or even a state statute. And nobody, certainly I, did not mention Pierre Rivas. This is the second time I've heard somebody defend him, which is interesting because he wasn't mentioned. And nobody said he did anything improper. Nobody said it was nefarious. But if you think it shows respect for the public, that they're not able to know in advance that, oh, by the way, they want to put something in front of your business that's going to be tremendously damaging, they're engaged in framing. They compete with big corporations, big chains down in Folsom. And when the subject was presented to the Downtown Business Association, none of which you know about, because none of you go there, the subject wasn't on the agenda. Now, I've given you a copy of the agenda for the month before. And the reason it's significant to let you know about notice is this is about parking regulations. You don't have to read much, right in the very center, what does it say? Parking update, Dennis Thomas, five minutes. Who would know, of the 270 people who get that, who would know that that's the biggest change in parking regulations the city has seen in years? Nobody. So that's not notice. Notice is an opportunity to know what to expect. There's a tremendous difference between me finding out about a zoning matter related to a specific matter like El Centro and this kind of quasi-legislative matter. So I think notice is it. You could change the rules. You choose not to, but do not say that I made an error. Your Perry Mason moment passed. Because yes, I knew about it before. I knew about it months before, but it was discussed in general ways. Like, look at here, it's talking about Boy Scout Troop Number 98. We talk about all kinds of things. The parklet was not raised the next meeting. It was purposely left off, saying that it had been decided. That was a lie. And there was, so there's no scrap of paper any of you can find in the city records that went out to the public that said these were specific places where they're going to plan it. And what they did the next, at the next meeting, was come up with an entirely new location. So that's what notice is all about. Nobody said that the existing rules were violated. Nobody said anything nefarious. And by the way, there was 50 signatures that, and there was nothing nefarious about me not getting noticed that night. I didn't know that what happens is when you subscribe to get notices by email, that after a year, they purge you of that. Again, it's nothing nefarious, that's why I didn't notice. And by the PDA, because they don't tell you. They want to keep you in the dark on purpose, just as they did with the parking regulations. This place was crowded last week with angry merchants, and they're angry about what was done related to parklets. I love to come back and give you a stack of building plans and ask for your approval and then say, oh, we can figure out later where it's going to go. It's irrelevant. Because that's exactly what you did related to parklets. You have a plan, you say what's...
Mr. Smith, if you could come to a conclusion.
You've got the conclusion.
Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item four, communications. Anything from staff?
Well, the previous speaker provided you with some correspondence tonight. And also another member of the public who is, I believe, speaking on item 5.2 also provided you with some information this evening.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item 5.1, and that's 385 Main Street, for a special temporary use permit. Item 17-02 sidewalk dining area permit. And this request is for an outdoor sidewalk dining within the city right-of-way at 385 Main Street, adjacent to the intersection of Stagecoach Alley and Main Street. And Andrew for staff.
Yeah, that will be me tonight. The request tonight is again for sidewalk dining area, and it's before the commission because of the provisions in City Code that grants the commission the authority to approve, review and approve sidewalk dining areas when the request involves more than two tables or more than four chairs and/or dining area serving alcohol. The commission may grant a special use permit for a maximum of one year. Renewal permits, if requested, may be granted for one-year periods by the Development Services Director. The applicant, Greg Phelps of Centro, requests an approximately nine-by-23-foot area for dining located within the city's sidewalk right-of-way, immediately adjacent to the front door of the ground floor, Central Business, which is the area facing the Bell Tower Plaza. Staff's report, the exhibits A, B, C, D, and E show the proposed sidewalk dining layout and furniture. These exhibits are also placed on the wall behind you for tonight's discussion. The proposed design features include five 24-inch round metal tables with bases with two metal chairs each, and one 27-inch square metal table with base with three chairs, metal chairs. A barrier design that would separate the sidewalk dining area from a five-foot or more in width pedestrian pathway would consist of a total of five fiberglass planters with espresso brown color to contain boxwood hedges. Three of the planters would be 16 inches high by 16 inches in width by five feet in length. One would be 24 inches high by 10 feet in width by three feet in length. And one would be 24 inches high by 10 inches in width by two feet in length. A 58-inch swag rope would be strung between the two feet and three-foot length planters. An existing retractable awning approved by the commission back in 2016 under Site Plan Review 16-05 contains the LED light fixtures that would illuminate the dining area during evening hours. The sidewalk dining furniture would be in place during the Central Business open hours of 8:00, excuse me, 7:00 AM to 8:00 or 9:00 PM in the evening. Each evening, all tables, chairs, and planters would be moved and stored inside the business. During special events downtown, the sidewalk dining area would not be put out on the sidewalk. The request as designed and analyzed by staff and is conditioned under the Development and Operations Standards under City Code meets the purpose and intent of the sidewalk dining regulations of Section 10-419 of City Code in that the limited encroachment of outdoor dining and the seating and furniture within the public right-of-way in front of the Bell Tower Plaza is ancillary to the adjacent Centro food and beverage establishment where the development layout does not unduly restrict public access or detract from the appearance of the surrounding area. Staff enthusiastically recommends that the commission grant the special temporary use permit 17-02, taking action to number one, adopt the staff report as part of public record, make two findings on page, I don't have the page in front of me, but there are two findings, one related to sequel guidelines, Section 15311, where this project is categorically exempt in that it involves the placement of minor structures such as chairs, tables, and planters accessory to the existing Centro commercial business in the same locations on the city sidewalk. And make the finding that the request meets the purpose and intent of the sidewalk dining regulations by allowing a limited encroachment of outdoor dining within and into the public right-of-way ancillary to an adjacent food and beverage establishment business where the development layout as proposed and conditioned does not unduly restrict public access or detract from the appearance of the surrounding area. Staff therefore recommends approving the request subject to the conditions of approval provided in Attachment B of staff's report. The applicant, Mr. Phelps, is in the audience this evening, and I believe he would like to address you this evening.
Thank you, Andrew.
I was planning on asking you, but I guess I will. I've been waiting, I've owned Centro since 2005 and have been waiting a long time to be able to do some outside seating. Before the renovation of Main Street, which really added a lot of things to Main Street, there was never enough room, so we always put out one table, and it was used sometimes, sometimes not used. But now that there is this remodel basically of downtown, it will add a lot of, I think it'll just add some nice features and nice atmosphere to downtown, especially with the awning open. And if I may say one thing, I don't plan at this point to be open, to have the tables out every day. It's going to be Thursday evenings, Friday evenings, and Saturday evenings only for right now. And then we'll see how it goes going forward. But right now, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Chairman, we might want to ask questions of the applicant. Not so fast.
Don't escape quite yet.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I appreciate your energy and enthusiasm with this. Haven't had a chance to ask some questions to staff, so I'll save those for when we get that opportunity. I do have a request, and that is, right now, there is a planter essentially at the southeast corners, a round planter, I think it belongs to the city probably.
Correct.
And it's got some nice decorative grasses, things of visual interest. Could we swap out or add, or at least add to the boxwood hedges that are proposed and get something with some color and some other visual interest in those planters?
I actually have planters already set with, they are out now. We put the planters out every day, excuse me, and they're set with, I can certainly add something, but for...
That'd be great.
What I wanted to do was make it a hedge.
Sure.
So it'll be grown and then trimmed, so it's just like a hedge.
I appreciate that, but if it would be possible just to add a couple of other small items, some, you know, the decorations at the bell tower, the flower arrangements and stuff are really nice, and they change that up seasonally, and I think it would be complimentary. That'd be pretty much my only request.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Questions for staff?
Just a couple of questions. Andrew, in your presentation, you mentioned there is a requirement for permitting with, when there is alcohol being served outside. And I'm going to presume that this is both a city requirement and is also an ABC requirement. I presume that there's a licensed premises component to this, and so I'll just assume that all applicants are taking care of the ABC, but then there's also a city requirement for this, is that correct?
Well, the special temporary use permit provisions require that whenever an applicant is proposing sidewalk seating, dining, et cetera, that involves the selling of alcohol to those patrons who would use those facilities, that it would trigger your review as a planning commission.
Okay.
But if an applicant or property owner does not provide alcohol, then, and they have, or they haven't exceeded the thresholds of the number of chairs or tables, then that provision would, for your requirement to review would not come into play. I would have to defer to Director Rivas whether or not the requirement for ABC licensing came into play with the preparation of that code language. I can't, I don't remember if that's, was something that was thought of at the time, but certainly...
I mean, that wouldn't be a city responsibility, that'd be a responsibility of the applicant.
To obtain that...
And for the record, I'm not opposed to alcohol, just really make that clear for a variety of reasons. I actually bring this up because I have noticed, and again, I'm not opposed, but maybe the merchants don't know, I've noticed outside of some other businesses where alcohol is served inside, that there are tables and chairs outside. And the question is, is there any kind of permitting that's required by the city? And is that allowed, or do we have to do some education with the merchants? Again, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying that it may be something that's got to be looked at.
I think that's...
If I can answer that question. Staff does propose to meet with the business owners that currently have tables and chairs in the city's right-of-way on the sidewalk and make them aware of the new code so they can come in then and make an application for the appropriate sidewalk dining special temporary use permit. Most of those, at least that we have seen, probably would only require department review and approval and wouldn't come to this body.
Right.
But again, as Mr. Painter pointed out, because alcohol is served with this and it exceeds the number of tables and chairs, it triggers the review by the Planning Commission. Okay. I had another question. There's the reference to the special events. Special events are not defined, at least in the staff report. For example, and I realize the applicant indicated, at least at this time, their hours are limited, but we have the, for example, the Wednesday evening farmer's market. Is that considered a special event? Certainly when Main Street is closed, I think by definition, that's a special event, but I'm wondering if there's some specificity described somewhere that indicates what exactly a special event is, because otherwise the language is kind of broad and led to interpretation. Special events typically are events, sometimes sponsored by the PDA. In the case of the Wednesday farmer's market, it's a farmer's market-sponsored special events. That application process is through the Community Services Department within the city, so they make applications through that department. It doesn't involve Development Services. And so that provision is to allow the city to be able to basically state that outdoor dining would not take place, it would interfere with that city sanctioned and permitted special event. So in this case, we're talking about special events that are qualified by being city sanctioned. Correct. Okay. I might just simply suggest then that the record be modified to reflect that, because that seems to be, because the Downtown Association farmer's market is not a city sanctioned special event, right? That's their own thing. And I'm just wondering if we need to make a distinction between city sanctioned and other special events. Yes, although the farmer's market is city sanctioned... Oh, okay. Meaning that a sponsor, and the name of the actual farmer's market escapes me, but they made application with the city and were granted the ability to hold a farmer's market and occupy city right-of-way. Do you have any objection to having the term city sanctioned special event added to the record? Maybe just state city permitted or special event under city permit. Okay. And it's just for clarity... Sure. ... specificity. All right. I think that was all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
On that same note, I was just wondering on that, would the applicant have the ability to come to city staff to, I guess for lack of a better term, a waiver? Like, I'm just thinking like the antique fair, I don't see why that would inhibit their ability to be able to have outside dining at the same time. In fact, it's later in the day anyway. So I'm just wondering, not all special events are equal, I guess, in terms of the right-of-way access. So I would rather not prohibit somebody from doing something if it's not actually going to have any material effect on the event of that day. So I was just looking for some clarity there.
Basically, it would be the city approaching the permittee with the sidewalk dining ordinance saying that this certain event is going to take place and it's going to occupy the sidewalk, and so the sidewalk has to remain open for appropriate pedestrian movement. And/or, in the case of the farmer's market, I think a lot of the marketing, the actual tents, stalls are there backing up against the sidewalk, and so to allow for appropriate pedestrian movement, we probably wouldn't want to have the sidewalk dining ordinance coinciding on a Wednesday evening with the farmer's market. But typically, as you pointed out, I don't think it would run, I don't think there'd be a conflict with the antique fair, and so if there's no conflict, no harm, no foul, of course, they could then continue with their sidewalk dining.
Okay, great. That's, I want them to have that maximum flexibility as possible.
Maximum flexibility. We want to maximize the use of the city right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I was just curious, it's not, there's, the, there's no opposition noted to the project in the staff report. Has there been any informal objections, or are we aware of any opposition to this project? I would defer to Mr. Painter, but I'm not aware of any opposition to this application.
No, the city has received no communications that I'm aware of, certainly in writing to the city regarding this item tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the public comments portion for this item. So if you have any comments on this item, please step to the podium and state your name if you wish.
Kirk Smith, as long as I'm here, there's a couple of things that come to mind. As you may know, Doc Weiser has a very popular Stagecoach Run. It's been going on for a long time, very popular among people who are local as well as tourists. And the Stagecoach operation is right in front of El Centro, so there's nothing mentioned about how that would be done. I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Friend and others, about wanting to make sure something doesn't happen in the future, but remember, your wishes don't really mean much, as reflected by the comments you made about the parklet, because Patty Barely wound up saying she wants six of them on Main Street. So your views didn't go very far. So you need to be very specific. You have the power, you need to be very specific as to what you think should or should not be permitted as far as that use. Secondly, of all the sidewalk dining areas, this is one of two that was contemplated before the regulation came up. Because after all, the 2007 streetscape plan called for a Bell Tower Plaza encompassing a number of changes like that extra sidewalk added. But this is the only one out of all of them that includes 300 extra square feet added. That's extra square footage they would not have had, but for the city adding that extra parking, extra sidewalk. And so if you count a dollar a square foot as the minimum for just the normal rent paid at a minimum for warehouse space, whatever your permit is for this property, you're giving it away unless they're paying that price per square foot, because that's what they're doing, is they're renting space from the city. So I think it's appropriate that that kind of cost be incurred for accountability.
Staff, do you have a comment? I know, I thought I noticed in the, or I did notice in the, that on the days that Stagecoach is running, that there would not be outdoor dining when Stagecoach was there.
Right, that would be a special event, and the city would then, you know, not allow sidewalk dining to coincide, because as the speaker pointed out, the Doc Weiser Stagecoach rides occupies a good portion of that sidewalk in front of Centro, so you couldn't have both uses occur at the same time. I guess to point out, the Planning Commission is, the reason why we wanted these sidewalk dining temporary special use permits to come before you is really to look at the furniture, to look at the, you know, the tables, the chairs, the look, you know, that it's not plastic chairs or plastic tablecloths, but something a little more upscale to bring a little more class, if you will, to sidewalk dining, so it's more inviting to the general public. As part of the temporary special use permit, they do have to apply for an encroachment permit, and so there is an agreement with the city so that will allow them to encroach within the city's right-of-way. It gives the city broad discretion to basically give them notice that they have to vacate any of those encroachments whenever the city deems it appropriate to have them removed. Oh, and then one, the speaker did mention something about rent. The city does not collect or charge any rent. Basically, it's just the application fee, which I believe is, I believe it's a $200 fee, and that's on an annual basis, so when the applicant comes in to renew the special temporary use permit, it's only good for a year. At that time, the city is able to reexamine if there's any issues, complaints, problems with pedestrian mobility, or anything else that may come about, and reexamine the issuance of that permit at that time. Thank you. I wanted to follow up on the furniture component, Mr. Chairman, because right now it says that the furniture and amenities shall be constructed of metal unless an alternative material is approved by the director or the Planning Commission. So right now, we're approving what's being proposed this evening. If at some point, some other materials come along that are like, you know, really great and awesome, the applicant could simply come back to the planning department, not necessarily have to come to us, but could come to the department and say, hey, we'd like to do this instead, and you would have the discretion to approve that, I assume. Yes, that is correct. Staff would look at any changes that the applicant may make, and then the staff would be looking for substantial conformity or consistency with the approved permit. And so unless the applicant was proposing something that the staff felt was maybe inappropriate, we would then elevate it and bring it back to the Planning Commission.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, we will close the public comments section and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Yes, Commissioner?
I'd just like to get clarification from my colleague on the cross-the-aisle here on what specific language do you want to change with respect to the event? I sort of thought you wanted to add something.
I just, just city permitted, I think, was the only, just... I just, just "city permitted," I think, was the only, just makes it specific. Right now, in the, let me try to find it, on page seven, item I Idaho, the applicant's narrative states that the outdoor dining area would not be in place during special event held downtown, so it's special events, but I'd just like to see that qualified to say "city permitted special events" is all. Just makes it clear what that, what we're talking about.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I really like, I really like this proposal. I really like the concept. I like the idea. I think it's good for downtown. I think it's good for not only just this business, I think it's good for other businesses as well. Anything that gets people downtown and keeps them downtown. At the same time, I don't believe a parklet's going in this area, correct? I think the city council decided to move the parklet up the street a little bit. And I think that's a, that's a good thing, because I think the parklet being down here with this would be just way too congested. So I'm glad to see that it, those have been separated a little bit. But beyond that, I think it's a great idea.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that all, that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings a fact. Number two, items one and two on page eight and nine of the staff report, approve special use permit 17-02 for sidewalk dining, subject to conditions of approval provided in attachment B to the staff report, and add "city permitted special events" to all references to special events.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
That was a really tight motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? All right, measure passes four zero, congratulations. Okay, moving along to item 5.2. This is for 971 Spring Street, Site Plan Review 06-01, Toad Hall request. And this is to extend the, for 12 months, the conditional use permit, or the conditional approval for a site plan review that involves the construction, grading, landscaping, exterior lighting, and signage for a 10,130-square-foot mixed-use professional office and residential three-story building and detached two-car garage located at 971 Spring Street on the northwest intersection of Spring and Pleasant Streets. And I'll go to the staff report.
Yeah, that'll be me again. The property owner requests this additional time to bring up to code the new codes that have been adopted since this was originally entitled back in '06, and to have some additional time to prepare those plans for city staff review and permit issuance. As I kind of alluded to, the project dates back to December of 2006, after city council denied two appeals of the planning commission approvals involving the planning commission's conditional approval of the final landscape irrigation and sign permits for the site plan review for the Toad Hall project. Again, that was back in December of 2006. This date is the project approval date, the official date. Pages two and three of the staff report provide a more detailed project history. The approved Toad Hall project involves the construction, grading, landscaping, exterior lighting, parking, and signage for an approximately 10,000-square-foot, three-story mixed-use building located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Spring and Pleasant Streets in central Placerville. Toad Hall would consist of three non-medical first-floor business professional office spaces, one non-medical business professional office space, and two residential spaces on the second floor or second level, and two residential spaces on the third level, the third floor. Both the planning commission and the city council made findings during 2006 that the project was categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, as it is considered an infill development project in that it proposes mixed uses that are consistent with both the business professional general plan land use designation as well as the zoning ordinance, that the zoning ordinance permits residential uses and business professional uses on business professional zone lands. The project occurs entirely within the city of Placerville, which is also a prerequisite of this categorical exemption, on a project site that is less than five acres, surrounded by urban uses. It is also due to the existing disturbed nature of the site soils. The site has no value for habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Significant traffic noise, air quality, and water quality impacts of the project are not anticipated due to the recommended conditions of project approval, city code requirements, and the city's development traffic impact fee program. As well as, the site is served by utilities. City water, sewer, and drainage utilities are located in or adjacent to the site on Pleasant and Spring Streets. Section 1049 of the city code, which is the site plan review ordinance, the planning commission may consider a request to extend the approval of a site plan review if the applicant makes a request and pays a new fee prior to its expiration. Ms. Savage submitted a timely extension request, an application fee prior to the expiration date. The commission must also consider any changes to the city code since the original approval back in 2006. As the commission is aware, in 2015, city code was amended as it relates to the zoning ordinance with respect to new parking lot shading requirements and water-efficient landscaping requirements. As a result of these city code changes, Ms. Savage submitted revised landscape and irrigation plans containing the addition of new interior live oak trees and one Deodore cedar tree, as well as changing of five approved Japanese black pine to Chinese pistachio where they're indicated on the landscape plan provided to you. Staff reviewed the revised plans and revealed that the Chinese pistachio trees are indeed listed on the city's development guide master street tree palette. However, their shade potential is somewhat limited, and the proposed locations of these trees have very modest planting areas in which to grow, and that's another concern. Staff therefore recommends red oaks to be planted instead of the Chinese pistachio as they are faster growing than the Chinese pistachio. And they grow to as high as 90 feet in a foothill location. They're drought tolerant, they like full sun, and they, too, are listed on the development guide plant list. They should do well along the Pleasant Street frontage of the parking area, provide ample shade opportunity and maturity. And staff and Ms. Savage have discussed this issue, and she supports the red oak recommendation. Staff has conditioned the request, requiring the developer and property owner to meet all requirements of the city's water-efficient landscape requirements, as well as the city code related to site plan review during the construction permit process. In terms of the red oak recommendation by staff, the changes to the site plan review 0601 would be consistent with the 50% shading, parking lot shading requirements, and appear in concept to meet the water efficiency regulations based on the species drought tolerance. If the request is granted, next year at the conclusion of the 12-month extension, the property owner could submit another application request to the commission to extend this site plan review for the remaining six months of the five-year city code maximum under the site plan review ordinance. The Toad Hall project therefore remains consistent with the city code requirements, is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines as categorical exemption. Section 15332 is an infill development project, as I described earlier. Public notice for this project, an extension request, was published in the Mountain Democrat. Property owners within a 500-foot radius of the site were mailed notice. The city did receive one written comment during the public comment period. And then this evening, as I mentioned, we do have a written correspondence from Robin Roars, who is a resident and property owner in the vicinity of the project site. The public comment period request and comment from Margaret Lockwood, the president of the Placerville Shakespeare Club. Ms. Lockwood raised concerns of traffic safety on Spring Street and parking for the project. Staff recommends the commission grant the one-year extension for site plan review 0601, the, what's called again the Toad Hall project, by taking the suggested actions on pages five and six of staff's report. The applicant is in the audience this evening, Ms. Savage, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have questions for staff before we get to the applicant?
Is this site part of that historical district?
It is not.
It is not? What, is it right on the back edge of it or something?
It's across the street.
Across the street, okay.
Across Pleasant Street, to be specific. Yeah.
So some of the concerns that have been raised in current correspondence, as well as over the history of the project, deals with traffic and parking. Are you in a position to speak to either one of those?
I'll be honest, I haven't read Ms. Roars' written communication this evening.
Let me make it a little bit more general.
Okay.
It's my recollection that the parking plan associated with the project was adequate. It conforms.
It met city code requirements, yes.
And then with regards to, with regards to traffic, I don't know that there's been a new traffic study. I don't believe this project triggered a traffic study.
It did not.
Because the density is small, that we, it wasn't anticipated would trigger a traffic study. And then, how people drive on that road is how people drive on that road, irrespective of the project. I mean, I think there's some examples of some accidents and overturned vehicles, but there's no project there and that's happening. So it's not that the project is causing that, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if the applicant would like to make a comment? Good evening.
And staff, I'm Cindy Savage. I'm a local resident in Placerville, been for some time. I'm also have worked on the Measure L Committee. I'm also on the Blue Ribbon Committee. I'm also a property manager, and I'm a real estate broker and a member of the Board of Realtors. And all of these things indicate that my heart really is focused on Placerville, because I live right downtown. And my concept in the beginning of this was to live there. And I thought, I guess in the letter that I wrote to you, I mentioned that I thought it would be a great idea just to share it with other people. It's a beautiful spot, it's a great location, and I think it actually adds to the feeling of Placerville. There's also some other things about the site that are, I think, very interesting to know. And as a real estate broker and a property manager, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, that housing in Placerville is an extreme critical stage right now. There is no housing available, basically. And this would provide a beautiful upscale housing for residents to live in Placerville that could walk to downtown. It would be, add vibrancy to downtown. It would probably be professional-type people that would rent this spot, and including Also, it's, I think I noted this, the concept I really liked about it is it's a, it's a green concept. It's live-work within the community. So cars are not necessarily needed, you can walk downtown, you can live and work in the same space, which is what I do right now in my residence on Lewis Street. As far as the traffic goes, I think staff just alluded to that, is, and that, it really isn't going to add very much to what's already there. There's cars overturned, they drive crazy in that street. But the thing that the project does add that hasn't been mentioned is that one of the requirements for the property was actually making the street a safer place with the turnout. So it actually will make that area safer. Any other questions? Did I cover everything? Some of you already know the project, some of you don't. You know what Toad Hall's all about?
I've always liked this project, from the beginning. I think just the concept, I think was good. Appreciate your persistence.
Thank you.
Ms. Savage, could you just go a little bit over more on the turnout, just for the record, that's added to this on the street?
On the turnout?
Yep.
Well, the driveway right now is, is an easement to the house that's behind the property. Okay, so it's an unpaved place, there's already traffic that comes in and out, and that's where the turnout would be. And it's, if I remember right, do we have the plans where they've submitted the parking, the driveway, the road plans? It actually widens it there. Also provides for a bicycle lane and sidewalks. And that's a really important thing, because right now, there's kids that kind of run in and out of the street.
Is this the graphic?
Yeah. I'm trying to see if this shows Spring Street. It really doesn't show it. Yeah, this map doesn't really show, but the street is not, we're not changing the size of the street, we're not creating a freeway there, we're just creating a place where the cars can turn and merge into the traffic. And then there was a required sidewalk, and there was a required bike lane. So it actually improves that street quite a bit.
Thank you.
Is there a good question?
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Ms. Savage.
That's it. Thank you very much.
It's on, it's on your attachment B, on page B is in, is in "Boi," condition number 24 under roadway. Roadway stripings shall be revised for the Spring Street driveway to provide shelter for left-turning vehicles, and a four-foot striped shoulder shall be provided on the north side of Spring Street, adjacent to the project frontage, as approved by the city engineer. And this was, and part of this condition was made by amendment from the city council back on October 24th of 2006.
Thank you. Well, now we'll go to the public comments section for this project. If anyone has any comments that would like to step forward, now would be the time. And if you'd like to state your name, you may.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Robin Roars. I'm the owner of The Seasons Bed and Breakfast in Placerville, which is adjacent to this property, which I observe on a daily basis, whether I'm driving or working in the garden. I presented you with previous documents that have been submitted, as well as new documents. When I talk about the, number one on my letter to you, there hasn't been a new current traffic study. Since I've lived there, there have been six vehicles that have crashed in the middle of her property. Four of those were turned upside down, hence I just gave you one example on one of the sheets of an upside-down vehicle. It isn't the property that's causing it, it's the fact that it's steep, this hill, it's a blind hill, and that the ingress and egress of a lot of cars going in and out are in peril. I think renters will not be apprised of this, so that, of these, of this history. And it's much different than if this were a single-family home, who would know ahead of time that this is a somewhat steep hill, a slippery hill, and it doesn't matter if it's dry or rain. I have plenty of videotapes showing the screeching and squealing of I have plenty of videotapes showing the screeching and squealing of tires going up the hill on a dry day, just as much as a wet day. These accidents, there are more than six accidents, but they lost control and missed Ms. Savage's property, wound up one in the Shakespeare Club, one going into a house next to the church, one going into my property. They have routinely lost control on Spring Street. It just happens to be that I've seen six vehicles crash and wind up in the middle of the property. This was an ill-fated construction, and at the time she applied for a permit and whatnot, you didn't have this history, but you do now, and you can do a traffic study, and I urge you to do one. You go ahead with a project like this, with a history like this, and I think that, that that's making unsuspecting people in danger, and I, I don't think that's fair. And that's what my first item one on my letter deals with. The second item deals with the fact that Bart Quigley and I have helped to maintain her property. We've called the city regarding the blockage of signs due to her trees and weeds, and that's on one of your pictures here. We've watched the city clean up weeds that encroach over fire hydrants and into the gutters. We've watched homeless people, which we've had to chase out there for months, picking up vehicle, bottles, garbage, et cetera, on the property. I don't feel that this person is a proper landlord on a vacant piece of property, and I don't think she would respect a historic neighborhood right adjacent if, if it were filled with people, just based on how she treats the property right now. The third item I have is that I don't understand the city's favoritism towards this project, why after ten years or so she gets, keeps getting a renewal of the, of the property. Her second sign didn't have for sale on it, and it looked like a real estate broker sign. And I called the city regarding that, and I said, "How is it that you can have advertising on this property without it being specific to that property?" And then the sign was changed. And I, I don't feel that, I don't know, understand is, what, why she has an exception to all the rules. Everybody else has to go through permits, and some are denied. And why she gets a constant renewal for ten years, I, I don't understand that special privilege. My fourth item on my letter, yes, I am directly involved in this, and I hope you don't, I mean, yes, I, I have a vested, a deep vested interest in protecting my business. I don't feel the two are compatible. I feel that the noise that comes from this, would come from this property would be not only during construction, but from the renters, would be incompatible with my having guests that need the peace and quiet, as well as weddings that also need peace and quiet, so they can do the vows and don't want to have to compete with noise that comes from a higher level. There is one house already up there, and they've been cooperative with me, but just being on their wraparound porch, talking and playing music, it can be heard very clearly in my garden, but they've cooperated with me through the years. And I feel that it, it's just not only the renters, but the construction that would be, put me in jeopardy regarding my business. I don't really know how I can survive. You have lost three B and Bs already in Placerville, the ones close to Placerville, and this is a historic 1859 property that has been offering B and B services for almost, I think, a little over twenty years. And I would hate to see the city decide to trade one business for another. I don't think it's fair. So I, I hope that you don't look at my bias and force you to overlook the facts that I've presented today, as well as there were forty-five adjacent homeowners, which I've listed, that when this project initially came up, we're very much against it, for density, for noise, for additional traffic, additional parking. And I think that Ms. Savage, during her initial project submission, was disingenuous to the city council when she described Seasons Bed and Breakfast guests and Shakespeare Club guests as parking on her property. That simply did not happen. Most of the guests and Shakespeare Club cannot navigate, physically navigate, being in the center of weeds. It's just not possible. I've never seen it, and I, and I would have been running up the hill saying, "You can't Again, I would recommend that you not issue, renew the permit, simply based on a traffic study that is really necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Margaret Lockwood. I'm president of Placerville Shakespeare Club. You have a letter that we submitted as part of your package, and attached to it is a letter that we'd previously written to the city council, expressing our concern about the safety of pedestrians crossing from our upper parking lot, crossing Spring Street to our clubhouse. We have about, during a year, about eight thousand people pass through for events in our, our clubhouse, so a significant number of them park in our upper parking lot and do cross. We've been told that a crossing there, a pedestrian, typical pedestrian crossing, is not a good idea, because it would give false hope to the people who would use it, and therefore become more dangerous than none. On the top of this blind curve coming downhill is one pedestrian warning sign. It's located very high for that kind of sign, very, just very tall, and it's also now behind a tree, so it's, you can't see it even if you know it's there and want it. It becomes, of course, just part of the scenery, and so in effect, we don't have any warnings at all. We would urge this committee to throw its weight behind having the traffic committee address this issue before something really awful happens. The awful is going to be somebody getting hurt or killed crossing Spring Street. We don't expect that it was going to change this matter that you're looking at now, but it's, we've been, we've asked over the years a number of times for this to be addressed. We are happy to provide ideas, to work with a safety committee, to develop some kind of system that will help. We urge our members constantly to be safe, to look carefully, but cars are coming down at a high rate of speed on that street, and it is a blind downhill curve.
Any other comments?
Mickey Kaiserman, I'm a resident in Placerville, property owner. I'm also on the Measure H and L committee, I'm a member of the P committee as well, but I'm speaking as a resident. I think this is a really viable project. I think it should definitely be extended, the permit. There's all, and when you look at the parking structure, you have two different ways for traffic to flow. There's, I think, offices exiting on one street, and the residents are exiting on another street. And if there is concerns about the traffic flow, that's a separate issue. This is really de minimis in the number of residents you're add, or adding. You're just talking about five houses and some office. So if, it will increase the traffic flow, but it's not significant. If there's problems in that street, that's a separate issue. So I suggest that you definitely approve this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
As long as I'm here. Kirk Smith. I really can't offer any substantive comments, and here's why. I went into the office today, and I talked to Pierre about other matters, and as always, he was very helpful, and he gave me some information about the two matters that are up here. But when you look at your agenda, what does it tell you? If you want the details, you go in and you make an appointment, in essence, and look at the maps. Who, and, who, and when, when it comes to the city council agenda, you go to highlighted items, and you can see the staff reports. So why do you do it this way? There is nothing you have on that board that could not have been made available to people and events. As long as you don't do that, you cannot possibly be serious in saying, "This three-by-five card you sent out to hundreds of people in the area does any good." It doesn't, because it doesn't lurk them to the issues. I don't know where that is. Again, I got honest, accurate information, and it's true, I could have weeks an event, set up an appointment, I'm sure that Pierre would have brought out all those things all over the conference table. But if you had just three or four percent of all the people who got that card do that, and I didn't get the card on that one, imagine how much time that would take. There is no excuse for that. Those, those plans up there, they're all digitized, aren't they? So you could put it on there, and people could see. So I have respect for the applicant, I also have respect to know the people who've spoken. They raise smart issues. They talk about traffic matters, and I don't see any way that that's to be addressed. I hope you'll do the public, a smart gesture, and realize that you're in control. I don't know if the earlier comment where you asked the staff, "Would you mind if we did such and such?", was professional courtesy, being polite, or whether you defer to the staff, because that's often the way it looks like. You have the power. You can change the notice if you want to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Smith, could I? Kirk, would you please come back to the microphone, because I want to make sure I understand what you, you brought this up in, in open forum, I think, and I think this is a process question you're, you're bringing up, and it has to do with, with access to the staff report by the public. Is that, am I understanding that, that's your point?
Yes.
Okay, great. But I believe that you can go online, you can click on the agenda item, and everything, with the exception of the large maps are up there, and it seems to me that if somebody has the level of interest on a project that is indicated in the staff report, that you would then take a little bit more effort if you needed to see the larger maps and go look at them. So I, I'm confused, because I'm, I'm always concerned about the public having access to the information. The information is there, it's posted on, on the website, you can, you can download it.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'll go back and look. I know that on those occasions, when I've sought to, to click, it wasn't highlighted, and I've heard others say the same thing. So I can't say, say consistently that's been the case, I just know of a couple instances.
I often lose my packets, and thank God that the city has the links there, because I can go and print them again. Hate to make that admission, but it's true. May have done that myself.
And I'm glad you pointed that out, and I will go back and check. I know in those instances, where I haven't, it, it hasn't been highlighted to click up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, well, you're going to close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Yes, Commissioner Wolf.
Just kind of a question, or the beginning of a dialogue with staff. On page two of the staff report, item 2.3 background, is listed, you know, sort of the, the history of this project, and as best I can tell, it looks like the project's been approved twice in the past, and denials, I mean, appeals of the project have been denied by the, the council, city council, at least twice. And then there's a whole, on page three, there's several, okay, schedules changed, they got additions to their time, codes changed, the city council several times moved the goalpost in terms of giving people more time to have their site plans completed. Is my impression correct?
I think you've summarized it as succinctly as I possibly could, yes. I tried to capture every potential and possible action that was taken over the, over the years since this project first came before you as a commission. Well, not all of you physically, but some of the members who are here tonight were, were at that initial review and consideration. And yes, the original approval by the commission did get appealed, and the planning, excuse me, the city council did not approve that, that appeal, so they denied the appeal. They did require the, the applicant to come back with some revised documentation regarding plantings and, and et cetera. That got approved by the commission, and subsequently got appealed to city council, where the city council upheld the planning commission's approval. So I, I don't want to go through every, every date, but yes, I believe this captures the actions taken by the city collectively regarding this request.
So we are, just to summarize, make sure I really understand it, we're in a situation where we have an approved project.
Yes.
We've been asked for an, an extension for them to submit their final plans. Their special use permit and, and associated conditional use permits have already been approved.
Technically, it's site plan review, but, but I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. And then what we're getting from the public is, there's some other issues that people are legitimately concerned about, but we're sort of in a position where we have to take a radical turn and basically undo an approval that's already occurred to place more requirements on the project. Is that, if, if, if we responded to some of the public input?
Yes, your request tonight is to consider the twelve-month extension, and also consider what I described in the staff report and mentioned in my oral comments regarding the changes in city code related to parking lot shading and the water-efficient landscape sections of code, which are, which are now codified.
So over time, the rules, I didn't mean to interrupt, but
Yeah.
Over time, the rules have, because the project's not been completed, those rules change. We have different code cycles, we have different
Correct.
Other legislative action takes place that affects the project because it's not done yet. But it has, the bottom line is, it has been approved, and we're getting asked to approve an extension, which this project is pretty good at, in terms of, we've had to have a lot of extensions.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it did get to benefit from city council extensions, planning commission extensions over the years, so, yeah, that's where we are.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a question of staff. If we don't approve this, first of all, we would have to have findings or a basis for, for denying it, right?
Correct.
But just hypothetically, if we were not to approve it,
Right.
And the permit expires, so then what happens? The applicant simply resubmits, I presume, right? Nothing, they have to wait a year?
Well, your action today, if it was to deny the extension, the applicant could appeal your decision as a commission to the city council.
Sure.
But to, to really facilitate the answer to your direct question, if no appeal was filed, then the, the current permit has expired.
Okay. So then the applicant has the option, do they have to wait a year to reapply?
In, in this particular case, no.
Okay. So, so if we were to deny the approval, and there was no appeal, the applicant could simply just reapply with all the, everything they've got so far, their entire big file, and then we'd be right back here, pretty much hearing all the same discussion that we're, we're hearing now. So, all right, thank you, and that's helpful. So I, I'll yield.
Could I ask the applicant to come to the microphone again, please? You're asking for a year's extension. What can we expect in a year?
Well, I have to say that this project got approved, took us years to go through all the things that you're hearing tonight, hashing with neighbors with the city council, and getting a project that was acceptable and that was approvable. And all of this happened as the economy began to waterfall. And I had two banks lined up that were willing to loan on the project when it was approved, and of course, you know, everybody disappeared, they evaporated. And so they found the project in that particular situation, and actually, I thought it was the end of the project. I had no idea that the city had actually even given me extensions beyond that, because I think my project was coupled with other projects that also saw the same downturn. I think my project was coupled with other projects that also saw the same downturn and failed to complete because financing disappeared and everything disappeared.
Okay, but let's go to the future.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to say. What's happened with my project that's maybe different with the hotel that's north of town is that this project is a small project. It's not a big project and it's not a tiny house. It's somewhere in the middle. So financing for this project hasn't developed as quickly or as easily as housing money has or as big projects have. So what we are right now, we actually have interest in in going ahead with this. I have people that are interested in in doing this project with me. I don't yet have bank financing, but we're very close to it. So what can you expect? You can expect me to try really hard to make this project happen for the city of Placerville. It's a great project, it should be there. When you talk about overgrown lots and grasses and things like that, do you think we're going to build a $3 million building and let it be a defunct piece of property? Do you not think that cars that fly over the hill right now will not see a building there? I mean, it might actually help the situation, but as to your question, what do you expect? Can just expect me to try as hard as I can. I love the project, I'd like to see it happen. I have spent a ton of finances on it. I have spent six years, because I started this in 2002, '04, somewhere in there, took us four years to get it through everything and then the economy dissipated on me. So if you want me to try, I will. That's all I can say. I can't promise you that there's going to be a project, but I certainly hope so.
That's what I started with, a perfect world.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We all realize that there are things that come up that that cause us to put things on hold.
It's been a difficult 10 years.
Projects over the last few years and we understand that. But I, you know, I don't want to come back in 12 months and have you stand here and say, well, I haven't haven't been able to do anything for this last year and and we're getting closer. You know, what I'm saying is I would like to think that that we'll be down the road on this one.
My gosh, yes. When I started this project, I asked Andrew. I said, the city liked the project. I took it to the engineer, they liked the project. I took it to Andrew and I said, how long is it going to take me to get this through? He said, one year. And I thought, okay, two. I didn't anticipate that building a home to share with others was really a much huger project than I ever imagined and that there would be so many little details to work through, which was mostly whether kids were going to get impaled on the fence of the Shakespeare Club, whether the guy that lived two houses uphill from me on the opposite side signed that petition against me because when I called him, I said, why did you do this? He said, because cars are going to lose their brakes and they're going to run onto my property and your water is going to flood onto my property. Well, first of all, if you knew the engineering that goes into this, there is no water ever going to leave this property. The other thing is, he lived two lots uphill to me and across the street. So the things that made 56 residents sign petitions against me were misinformation, I wasn't building a freeway, my cars were not going to run uphill and water definitely wasn't going to run off the property. So I had to, you know, Andrew did tell me that I should do neighborhood meetings. And I thought, what's the big deal? But in retrospect, I can say that was very wise advice. I should have met with all of the residents on Bedford, which is across the street and I only see the backs of their buildings. But there was just a lot of misinformation about what this project was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Savage, come one more time.
Thank you. Ms. Savage, you know that I've been a fan of the project since you presented it some time ago. At the same time, I picking up on Commissioner List's question, would you have any opposition to reporting to staff in the event you have a significant development? I would presume that financing is probably now the the next big step. You get this approval, that's certainly very helpful to go go to the bank with, but you get you get the financing, now now you can go and you can move. So I have two questions for you. One, would you have any opposition if you have any major positive developments such as that, reporting that to staff so staff could simply make a report out to this commission when we have our end of the evening reports from staff? Do you have any opposition to doing that?
Not at all.
Thank you. The second question I have for you is, would you have any opposition to a condition that would limit construction to Monday through Friday? And I think we allow 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, I think that's our general hours of construction. Would you have any opposition to no construction on Saturdays?
That's very kind because we went through all of this and actually my permit required more limited construction than that.
Oh, I didn't recall the details.
It was pretty, it was pretty limited.
Okay, so Saturday, no construction on Saturdays as
That's easy, we'll go with that, yes.
Okay, all right, well, I'm not relaxing the
No. No.
Commission.
Yeah, if if it would be helpful, staff can read the applicable condition. It's on it's on page C under the planning division, condition number 35. All construction shall be limited to the hours between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. No construction shall be allowed on Saturday and Sunday unless with written authorization of the city planning division or the Department of Public Works.
I want to point out that this commissioner has been consistent on this project for the past 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one one more request and I can certainly empathize with this. And that is if if the, you know, depending on how, because we don't, no one knows how exactly how long this is going to be, I mean, to be able to keep the shrubbery to a minimum, keep it maintained so that it's not overgrowing. I I have one right next to me that's constantly does that, so I can empathize with that from a neighbor's perspective. So as a request, I would love to be able to see that property be just maintained in terms of growth on there in shrubs.
I understand. I did go and pick up all of the leftovers from the homeless person personally, myself. And there is, you know, I didn't realize that Spring Street was mine to upkeep because there's a little interesting thing going on there. But yeah, I'll do that, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
You're free to sit now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are, yeah, so I, we're going to close the public hearing portion now and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Wolf.
I can't help but think that this is one of those projects where it's always interesting when there's a vacant piece of property and someone owns that piece of property and then they try to do something and, you know, they try to work within the system that we have as as flawed as that system may sometimes appear, but that vacant property owner has the same right to be able to rely on the system working so they can use their property for the highest, their highest and best use, as does their neighbors. And there's the rub that we face all the time in in looking at the zoning ordinance where where people's, you know, where the, you know, we all just kind of have to get along and we have this system that's not perfect for all of us and and boy, you know, it's kind of like when people buy a lot next to an airport, build a house, and then they complain about the flights from the airport. And I'm not saying this is apples to apples, but it feels a little bit like that. This property's been vacant for a very long time and it's been vacant since many of the neighbors started their businesses or started their enterprises. So the prudent person would know someday there's going to be something there and I may not like it. And so you use the system to try to make your comments known. But the fact that the neighbor wants to do something is just dislegitimate in my view as the existing uses. So that's enough of that.
Comments? No, I was
Okay. I think there's two, two things have been brought up. The use of this property and then the the traffic on the streets. And and really, I think that should have been brought up in in the first part of the of the meeting, the comments from the public with things that are not on the agenda tonight because I think it was not totally related to this property. Whether there is a 10,000-square-foot building and and so on on this property is going to have a minimal effect on on the total impact of traffic on those two streets. I I was on Pleasant, I think it's Pleasant, yes, and getting ready to make a right-hand turn and to go uphill and someone came around that corner and they skidded around my car. Talking about angels are watching over you, I guess. So I I'm quite aware of what what we're talking about there, but but I think that's a separate issue that needs to be brought before before this commission, before the planners, before the city council, that we have a problem with traffic in that location. I don't think we can tie it to this, what is going to happen, which on to this piece of property. And so I don't want somebody to walk away tonight and say, oh, they didn't listen to what we had to say. We are hearing you and and to a certain extent, we're making it known that that something needs to be done with the traffic at that location. So I think that's the first issue. The second issue is, you know, I appreciate the the quality of project that I see that is planned for this property.
So I'm not going to repeat comments that Commissioner List just made, except to say that I think you're spot on, that the the traffic situation is not the responsibility of the project, it's responsible of the city and they exist irrespective of the project. I think it's always important, at least for me personally as a commissioner, to to convey as much as possible to to the to the public, particularly if there's opposition, that we are in fact listening to the comments. So comment number one, I think, has been addressed. Comment number two, with regards to the attractive nuisance of the property, the vacancy of the property. I have to believe that the development of the property will in fact eliminate the problems with homelessness and garbage. I mean, it's actually one of the reasons you would want to have that project there. And I think, given the price tag likely to be on this project, I have a very difficult time believing it's going to come into ill repute and I think it's going to actually enhance the area. It's a fantastic infill project and I think the design elements that are going into it, I've always been a fan of. With regards to the favoritism, I think you can see by the action of the city council and to be precise when that was, back in 2015, I believe, the council automatically extended all existing applications because the council recognized how difficult the environment was for development and for financing. I don't think it's specific to this project and I don't believe that this applicant has been receiving any other treatment that other applicants haven't. We've approved a lot of extensions over the time and with with the circumstances similar to what we have here. Then with regards to item four, and I certainly respect Ms. Rar's need to protect her business. And so there are two things. I'm really actually happy to see that we had put the conditions for construction in there and I had a vague recollection that with the majority of weddings happening on a Saturday, you wouldn't want to have nail guns and big construction going on when you're doing those kinds of projects. So I'm glad to see that the construction is limited that way. At the same time, I have to believe that if there's 60 to 120 people attending an event at the bed and breakfast, that in and of itself is also going to generate noise going up the other way. And so that to me seems to be kind of a two-way street and and the applicant's not expressing any concern about that happening with with the business that is entitled to be there and should be there and is welcome to be there. So I'm not concerned, given the controls that we've put on the project in terms of construction, that that's going to be a problem. And given what the project is proposing, I do not see the renters being a problem. I'll tell you, I have some property up up at Silver Lake and we have some new quote-unquote residents, people that bought a cabin across the street, and they're noisy. They aren't renters, they're property owners and they're noisy. Okay, so I don't think you can make a distinction between people who own and people who rent and saying that the rent, the homeowners are going to be really quiet and the renters are going to be noisy. Trust me. Noisy people come in all shapes and sizes and forms and that's just the way it is.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think I drive by this property every day to go to to go to my house, so I'm well acquainted with with the area and and the reckless driving that sometimes goes on 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 that street. You know, anyone that's going up that hill knows that even when you're first coming around the turn, that cars constantly cross over into the other side if you're coming too fast down the hill to go either left or right onto highway or onto Highway 50. And so you have to be cognizant as you're as you're driving through there. I'm surprised I haven't seen an accident as I go back to my house on the on the backway through Green Street. And so I do think that something should be looked at in terms of the traffic on that street. I don't know what the answer is, but it certainly isn't relatedness to this project. The square footage, this is not a Walmart going in, this isn't a Rayleigh's, it doesn't have a traffic pattern that's going to, it's going to be de minimis, the amount that would be going into this location. That doesn't mean that there's not traffic safety problems on the street. We do hear you, I hear you, I drive it almost every day. And so I do think we have to look at what we can do to make that corridor more more safe, but I don't believe that that should be connected to this project. Thank you.
If the chair agrees, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes.
I move we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings of fact one and two on page five and six of the staff report, grant a 12-month extension per item three on page six of the staff report. And my motion includes new conditions of approval 51, 52, and 53 on page six of the staff report. And the motion also includes the revised nomenclature requested by staff in item four on page six of the staff report.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's have a vote. All those in roll call.
Member Wolf.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Aye.
Member List.
Aye.
Chair pro tempore, Saragosa.
Aye. All right, that item passes 4-0. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to reconvene. And we are going to move on to item 5.3, and that is zoning amendments, front yard fencing, walls, and use restrictions. That is zone change 10-02. And this has been, we've continued this twice from the June 6th and June 20th Planning Commission meetings. And this is a request from the Placerville Development Service Department, initiated amendments to their Placerville zoning ordinance to the city council, community has set of concerns regarding the height and location of fences and walls and use restrictions in front yards. And so I will now hand this back over to Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Just to give a little recap, this item was last considered by the Planning Commission back in June 6th of 2017 and then it was continued to June 20th of 2017. It was continued to this date from then due to the fact that we had only three commissioners and the importance of such an item, you know, we really wanted to have at least four. Five would of course be optimum to consider this request. Let me start by one cleanup item. And if the commission would turn to exhibit A, that is the section of the staff report that shows the draft modifications that would be made to section 10-4-3 in regards to yards. Looking at item C, the first number one, where you see the strikeout, staff was a little bit hasty, staff meaning me, a little hasty in striking all of that out. Essentially, if you would unstrike out that paragraph and in the second sentence, what it would read is a fence wall or hedge not higher than six feet above natural ground level may be located on the required side or rear yards. And everything remains the same. same. So with that, this is what staff would suggest to maybe help facilitate a more efficient discussion of this item. I would break it down into two items. Probably one of the main issues that precipitated the council directing staff to want to move forward with some further regulations of the front yard had to do with the use of the front yard, such as storage of inoperative vehicles, boats, RVs, storage facilities of certain materials. So that would be one discussion that I would recommend that your council would have, separate from the fence height. I think the fence height issue is a little more, is more simple. One of the things that the council, or that the commission had requested that staff would do would be look at other jurisdictions on how they regulate fence heights that are located within the front yard. And so, we apologize, I'd like to, I would have wanted to come back to you with a table, and I still plan on doing that, but we did look at Eldorado County, we looked at Auburn, we looked at Jackson, we looked at Sutter Creek, and we looked at Grass Valley. And all of those jurisdictions do regulate the height that is located within the front yard. And mind you, when we speak with a front yard, we're looking at 20-foot width from the edge of property line into the property. So it's that 20 feet then where we would regulate a fence that's located anywhere in there. Typically, somebody would locate a fence just back of the property line. Most of these jurisdictions regulate the solid fence or wall or hedge up to either from 30 inches up to 40 inches in height, and then go up to either six or seven feet as long as it's 50% open. And that's what you typically see when you drive in any community. Staff is sort of amiss of why that wasn't included here in the city of Placerville, being a city as opposed to a more rural county area, but we'll also look at other counties as well. We want to look at Placer, look at some of the other surrounding counties and see what they do. So I would look at that and have a discussion then on the fence height as well. And so with that, staff would just refer it now to the Planning Commission to open the discussion on either of those, hopefully to be discussed a little separately, the use of the yard versus the fence height component.
Commissioner Wolf?
What would happen to, it may be in here somewhere, but I might have missed it, but what happens to, should this be approved? You know, we make our positive recommendations to the city council and they approve it. What happens to existing non-conforming uses?
They would become just that, an existing non-conforming use. So the city isn't going to come back and make them rip out their wall or their fence if it was legally constructed prior to enactment of the ordinance. Yeah. No, that's true. So is the term for that grandfathering? Yes. Grandfathering, but not entirely, because grandfathering means it's okay because it happened before this date. We still, but we're still considering non-conforming, so it's like step-grandfathering, I guess. Well, grandfathering, the term grandfathering typically is a more colloquial term, meaning a legal non-conforming use. Legal meaning that the use or, you know, the fence was constructed in accordance with the codes in effect at the time. And so some amendment or change of that code doesn't render then that fence illegal, just legally non-conforming.
Which is sort of happening here.
So the more I've contemplated this, both the fences and the use, the more troubling it's become to me, frankly. And staff gave us some examples in our previous report. They showed us examples of fences in yards and this, that, and the other, and that's fine. But if you drive around Placerville in this community, it is irregular. We don't have square, nice, flat lots, okay, with front and back and sides. A lot of houses are built right up against a hill, okay? There is no backyard to speak of, for example. And people have taken to using their front yard, perhaps in a way is not typical in the classic, in the classic sense. And so I have, I plan to be very cautious in any type of regulation that's going to dictate and control how people get to use their property. Both of these, when you synthesize them down from my perspective, it really comes down to aesthetics. Somebody doesn't like the way something else looks. I'm really sorry if you don't like the way something else looks. If you don't like it, then buy it and treat it however you want to treat it. I've said this before, this came up some years ago, and it came up a couple of months ago, and I'm going to say it again. These really represent to me citywide HOA, CCNRs, okay? And I respect people that want to move into an area that have HOAs and CCNRs, completely respect that, okay? There's not much difference between the use and the fence to me than having a garage door that's open, and then somebody's not going to like having garage doors open, and next thing you know, we're going to have an ordinance in front of us that doesn't allow you to leave your garage door open. And so I just want to caution my fellow commissioners to really look at this in terms of what it is. And so it really bothers me. I'll do my best to kind of offer what I think are maybe some reasonable approaches, but this is troubling, frankly.
Other comments?
I'm looking at, on page four, one, yeah, 1C, 1B, it looks like, and we're talking about a fence which is 50% open or more. And I'm envisioning a guy that says, wow, okay, I'm going to take a six-foot picket, and I'm going to put one next to it, and I'm going to nail that one and pull this one out and go along. So now I've got 50% open. I'd hate to live next door to that, but that's 50% open, so he'd be within reasonable rights under this code. The other thing that bothers me is, we don't say anything about the guy that decides, okay, I want a six-foot-high chain-link fence, it's more than 50% open, so I've got chain-link fence all around my residential lot. Am I off-base on that?
No, everything you're saying is correct.
And I think you can understand why I don't like the concept.
Well, I think, you know, to sort of go back to what Commissioner Friend was saying, I would think the regulations regarding fence is more pertaining to the aesthetics, because aesthetics affects, at least in the eyes of many, property values and those kinds of things. If you look at, if you're driving up, say, on Coloma Street, and you turn on Cemballic, and you can drive in any of those adjoining subdivisions, you see the solid fence there on the property line that shelters the rear side yard, or I mean, rear or backyard to those lots. You drive in the interior of that subdivision, it's all open. Now, just imagine what that would look like if everybody in that neighborhood built a six-foot solid fence in their front yard. Do you want to regulate that? You know, great, this is what we recommend, because this is what you typically see in every other jurisdiction in the state of California. I haven't gone beyond, looked at others. With regards to the use of the yards, that's where a lot of the complaints have been driven, the derelict cars, the storage of materials, and that's, that can have more of a blighting effect on the neighborhood. So again, that's what you're looking at. If the commission is fine with that, and you feel that's an overreach, yeah, because that's something, some jurisdictions regulate that and some don't. It's not as, you know, common and ubiquitous as you see with the fence height restriction, then you can certainly make a recommendation that we not go there and we not regulate that, and maybe you're only regulating the fence height. But that's purely at the prerogative of the commission.
I would feel more comfortable with an ordinance that said something in terms of man-made fences no higher than three foot. Now, if you have a bush, you know, you plant boxwood and it grows up to six foot, and it's trimmed nice, that's fine, but a man-made fence no higher than three or four foot, I can buy that. I guess I don't like the idea of somebody throwing up a six-foot chain-link fence across the front of a property just because they can do it. Code says it.
Right, and staff understands that, and there's no, we looked at some communities, I think it was Tiburon, in Tiburon, actually, you have to get, you have to get, seek approval for the type of fence you want to install in a community like Tiburon. Staff thought a lot about the hedge. And because we're in an area where a lot of natural vegetation grows and creates a natural barrier or a hedge, staff, you know, we're happy you brought that up, and so that's something where staff was sort of, maybe we don't regulate natural barriers, because a lot of times you look at a front yard, the natural barrier is already there regardless of somebody having a hedge. I think one of the photographs that we provided you in the staff report is a well-trimmed hedge of fotinia there on Coloma Street, just south of B Street. There's no fence inside of there, it's just a natural hedge. And so that could be something we could look at where it is just regulating man-made structures that serve as a fence or a wall and leave natural vegetation out of the equation.
I would be more in support of that than...
And in that particular case, too, that giant shrub or wall of shrub covers a basketball court, and there's nothing else there, so it's actually much more appealing to the eye with that there as it is anyways.
Is there anything preventing us from, so we're talking about regulating and allowing non-mad-made fences, is there anything to prevent us from avoiding the evils that we usually perceive of chain-link fences? Would we be willing to say no? I mean, I've experienced that as a property owner where somebody on a corner lot put in the chain-link fence, and it just destroyed the rural atmosphere that we all wanted. And we all had to drive by it because it's where our mailboxes were. It was horrible. And that owner at the time was perfectly within their rights to do that, and that's one of those things where I don't want us to overreach, but I just throw that out for discussion.
Yeah, if staff could just make a quick comment, currently, our current code would not prohibit a six-foot fence within the front yard setback, chain-link fence. It's not prohibited. We don't have any way of regulating that, because it's not subject to a site plan review or any other discretionary review.
Yeah, but can we just put it in this?
It's subjective. You don't like it, right? And I'm not saying I do like it, but because somebody doesn't like it is not a reason to impose that citywide.
But all of this is subjective about the fences, I would argue.
Well, okay, and so if we're going to go there, then we better have some very precise and objective ways to manage it, because we're talking about dictating to the private property owner how they get to use their property, what they can and cannot do, what they muster or may, what they may or may not use. And that, to me, is a very, very fundamental and important thing. Now, if you go to image, I brought this up last night, you go to image three in this. Image three is gorgeous and very attractive, but it would be in violation of what's being proposed.
I would just add, Michael, don't misunderstand my question. We're probably more in agreement than disagreement. I'm just wondering, that's the elephant in the room, as far as I'm concerned, the chain-link fences.
So you would call chain-link fences out as an exception to everything else? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just asking what everybody feels about that, because I've heard most, heard and seen most problems and discussions over this, over the years. It's about chain-link.
Right, but all of these examples in the exhibits that you see...
None of them are chain-link.
None of them are chain-link, okay? You have, I mean, exhibit six is the tall wooden fence, and there's one on Mosquito Road that somebody built right at the property line, right at the sidewalk, that actually is pretty attractive. And I think if I lived on that tiny little road that's gotten very, very busy, I would probably do the same thing, particularly with all the RT transit buses and everything going there, I'd probably do the same thing. And so, again, what are we trying to accomplish and to whose benefit? That, to me, is a test that we've got to be able to defend. Staff would just point out again that with regards to the fence, the staff is only looking at regulating the height of the fence, and that it be solid up to, you know, 30 inches or 36 inches, and then it has to be 50% open beyond that up to six feet. Nothing in regards to the design or the, you know, any other architectural features of that fence.
I think, it just was occurring to me, aren't we really talking about a kind of problem that exists sort of on the edges of everybody's interest? I mean, there's only a few, you know, disexamples, is that a word? There's only a few bad examples of this. Most people kind of figure this out and it works, and it's not a problem. And I would concur with Michael about, you know, maybe we just don't want to go here. I'd rather have the other problem of occasionally there's something that pops up that, you know, we can't beat it back with a regulation, but maybe that's okay.
Well, there's two things I would throw up for consideration, and by the way, bifurcating this from the use, I think, this is the easy one of the two, and I support the bifurcation. Two things. One, there's, it seems to me there should be an exception provision. And I brought up the fact that some of the parcels, many of the parcels within the city limits are irregular, and we live in a hilly community. And so again, if you've got no backyard, maybe you would have the ability to get an exception so that you could actually fence in your front yard and use it as most people would as a backyard. If staff could comment on that. Staff concurs, in fact. Staff had a discussion on that matter for that reason. There are circumstances where really somebody doesn't have any kind of effective backyard because the slope runs right up from the rear of the house, and so their side or front yard serves as the rear yard for activities, family activities, and so on. Also, you can have a situation where maybe you have a house on a corner, a very, very busy corner, it could be an arterial or something of that nature, and they're trying to screen noise from the house. And so when staff was looking at other regulations with other jurisdictions, typically there were some that had an administrative permit where they could go in, and if they met certain criteria, such as those that I mentioned, then staff would be able to administratively allow then a solid fence up to six feet. Okay? So I like that direction, that's one. Two, you know, what if somebody wants to have a Mediterranean-style courtyard in their front yard for whatever reason, okay? As stucco or whatever it is, and they want a private patio and all that? You know, I don't want to put in regulations that would preclude that. Now, I think, I had come up with a formula last time, I couldn't find my notes, but I could if we ever get to that point, where for every foot back from the property line, the fence could be X percent above whatever, to a maximum of six feet. You know, I still think some sort of gradation like that is a balance, and I'm looking at trying to strike a balance on something that, like this regulation.
Yeah, I had kind of the same thoughts on sort of your lot line versus your building envelope, which is sort of the surrounding of your house, and whether or not there's enough of a setback that we could do, where you could kind of step it up as you go further back, depending on if you have the available space to do that. But I do think there should be an exception, and I also saw that some cities have the administrative process where you could come forward and ask for an exception. And another example was if you lived next to an industrial, maybe you had industrial across the street from you, or a business or commercial, that, you know, you would have the ability to put a six-foot solid in, as opposed to just sort of a one-size-fits-all for everybody. So I do think that administrative aspect is certainly something that should be available to people, because we do live in... in a city that doesn't have, we're not Irvine, we don't have just flat houses with good neighbor fences and everything sort of planned out, you know, this is a lot of hodgepodge and hills and no backyards, and so I certainly want to give people the ability to use their front yard if they don't have a backyard as their place to be outside with the family or sit outside and read a book and have some ability to have a little bit of privacy, without making it, I think the things we need to take into account is line of sight to ensure that, and this is where the administrative function would come in, that, that it's not creating a, a line-of-sight problem for, for traffic, whether it's on a corner or anywhere else, so that there is some parameters around what somebody could put up, so that it doesn't create a public safety problem down the line.
I'm sorry, just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, I just want to point out that our current code does address that triangular section there at an intersection to ensure line of sight, that the fence can only be three feet in height within that triangle.
Thank you. So I guess, so Pierre, where, because, so where, I guess where, from a staff, because I know we were going to sort of hold this again for more data, so I just want to make sure everyone here understands exactly where we're going tonight in the public, so that, you know, we know where this conversation is going, or if we're continuing this conversation toward a later date.
Yes, correct. Staff is basically, would, you know, would like this be a meaningful opportunity for discussion amongst the planning commissioners and also for additional public comment on the matter, and maybe we can get some additional direction, administrative exceptions or remedies where staff can easily just sign off on a six-foot fence for certain circumstances that are appropriate.
I'd also be more comfortable we get the fifth commissioner.
So why don't we open this up then to public comments at this time? If anyone in the public has any comments on this, portion now would be the time to make those comments. Thank you.
Mickey Kaiser, man, a resident of Placerville. I agree that you need to bifurcate these two issues, the fence versus the uses in the front yard. Is there a restriction on use right now, is one of my questions, in the front yard? The 36-inch height seems problematic in some ways, because if you have a dog, certain dogs can jump a 36-inch fence easily. You have deer that can jump it. A lot of people are doing organic gardens now in the front of their homes, which is very beneficial, it looks great, you can harvest your local produce, and a 36-inch yard deer, 36-inch fence deer would be, have a field day in there. I don't, my daughter lives in San Rafael, and there they have a six-foot height fence limit, and it could be higher if you had a previous fence that was eight to 10 feet, they'd let you, that grandfathered in, so some people have built these interior courtyards where they're totally boxed in, and they look beautiful, but it's like you've gathered all this living space in the front of your house, and it gets problematic, because if you just say, also regarding fences, if you're saying you don't like chain-link fences, what about barbed wire fences, razor ribbon fences? You know, you can do all, you know, there's so many things people can come up with, that would be problematic for a lot of people. Either have to have somebody approve the type of fence material that's acceptable for the area. I think the CCNR HOA thing is great when you have a new area that's brand-new and you don't have existing homeowners with thousands of different kinds of fences and uses what they've done in their yard. I think that creates so many problems on how you get, and then what happens when somebody wants, somebody new moves in? Are we going to say you have to then adhere to the new code? Or we say, oh, it's existing, you stay with it? Or you have to now come up to the new code and lower or raise your fence? It seems like lots of issues are raised by this problem, and my question is, why did this come up all of a sudden? Do we have a lot of complaints in the city about fence height, people building fences, and what's in their front yards? Is it just a small amount of people complaining about this, or is it like a massive problem about fences and people having motorhomes and trashed-out cars and toilet bowls and whatever else they wanted to keep in their front yard? Or is it just a minor problem that can be dealt with a different way? I don't know. That's my comments. Thank you.
We get this great audience for comments tonight. I'm Cindy Savage, I'm a local resident, and I'm really not for regulating Placerville. And on my particular street, which is Lewis Street, right downtown, I wish my neighbor downhill would put up a fence. She accuses my neighbors of throwing their underwear over her, into her yard, and I know they don't, and trash and other things, and I think a fence in that case would look really nice. She's very much downhill, her whole property's downhill, and she has duck ponds and all kinds of stuff going on and incredible yard art, and I think for her, a fence would make her feel more protected. Across the street from me is another piece of property, and this just is what Placerville's made out of. Her front yard is really her side yard, which has a fence, and I love it, because it makes her yard a private place. And then, as you already spoke about, a house that's on the corner, on the corner of Lewis and Pacific Street, they have no backyard, and they've created a fence to give them some privacy in a front yard. And then, other issues are the deer. I don't have any front fence, my house is open, except I do have a hedge, but it's, it's pretty much open, but it's very limited what I can grow in my front yard, because I can be like three feet away from a deer who's passing in front of my kitchen window, and it doesn't even move out of my sight. You know, I can throw a tomato at the window, nothing happens. And then, the other issue for me, and I'm not sure it's, Placerville's just a really hodgepodge kind of a town, and that's part of the charm of it, I think, until maybe somebody puts up a razor wire fence, which we would have to talk about that, but the, the thing is that I like that we can do without regulating every little thing that happens in our lives. No matter what you regulate, some neighbors are going to put up a fence that I'm not going to like. There's going to be issues, I mean, a three-foot fence to me is, I'd rather have no fence at all in the front yard. What does a three-foot fence do? Keeps the chihuahua in, that's about it. But the other thing that I've experienced on my street, because my street goes downhill into the downtown area, and I have been robbed twice, once by a three-time offender that entered my house at five o'clock in the morning, I've had two cars stolen out of my garage, I've had people go through my back, because I'm on the corner, they'll go through a back fence, and they've taken crowbars and tried to open windows all the way around, and, you know, I kind of like the freedom to know that I could put up a fence if I saw fit. You can't regulate beauty. I don't know what Santa Barbara has for fences, but I know they have beautiful tall hedges, and the people do beautiful things because they have beautiful income to do it with. So if you could regulate people in Placerville who have the income to be beautiful fences and the, know what beauty is, then let's regulate that, but that's not our town. We're kind of a town of all kinds of people, and I kind of like to keep it that way, and I like less regulation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evelyn Veer-Camp, Placerville. I would endorse Mr. Friend's caution about how far we carry this. I agree with virtually everything I've heard, and that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that will do it on the public portion part, so we'll close the public common portion and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, is there any interest in moving, continuing this item? I want to say until, I guess we have to do a date certain, but I'm, I'm looking at having five members of the commission for this particular item, if that's agreeable.
Yeah, I think so. I think that was the intent, even the first two times that we've done this, where we've tried to get a full complement of commissioners, because this is a very important topic, and a lot of philosophy goes into what we do or do not do on this. I know we have talked about bifurcating this issue in terms of the vehicles, trailer toes and other items, and I also agree with that, so I think as we have this discussion, we'll want to be able to continue to bifurcate that issue, and then, you know, and have those two separate discussions on both the fence as well as what you can have sort of parked permanently in your, in the front of your house, or not have. So I think at this point, with, if there's no disagreement, we'll go ahead and table item 5.3.
Yeah, staff would recommend that you continue the item to a date certain, and that would be the second meeting in September, and that would be September...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Do we anticipate having a full commission by then?
We do.
Thank you.
I would move, do we need a second on that, or is that a motion? I'll second the chair's motion to continue this until September 19th. Is that your motion?
Yes, it is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? None? Item passes. Okay, so fellow commissioners, we do have one more item on the agenda tonight. I kind of want to take a poll of my fellow commissioners to see if we want to continue on with item 5.4, which is the accessory dwelling units, or if we want to hold this item over to the next meeting. I do know that it will not change any items that currently come before the city, whether we take action tonight or not, so I, I'm certainly willing to forge ahead, but if we think it's been a long night, I can certainly understand that as well.
The challenge with this is I don't know how much discretion we have. I mean, we basically, we really don't have the opportunity to do much. I mean, right? It's pro forma, unfortunately.
Yeah, technically, we haven't announced the item, so it's kind of difficult for us to comment on it, but to be factual, but yeah, it's pretty pro forma. There are a couple of things that you, as a commission, city council could inflect into it, and that those perhaps, you know, warrant, warrant some discussion.
So, go ahead, Commissioner. How was you going to move we continue the item?
Second the motion. Do we need a dates? First of all, do we have to open it, number one? Then number two, do we have to have a date certain?
Yeah, technically, you need to open the item and then, yeah.
So let's go ahead and...
I withdraw my motion.
So I'll go ahead and open the item, so it's item 5.4, zoning tax amendments, accessory dwelling units, item 17-01. The planning commission has requested to make recommendations to the city council regarding, concerning tax amendments to the city's regulation of second dwelling units under the zoning ordinance, and these amendments are necessary to conform to the change in government code made by Assembly Bill AB 2299 and Senate Bill 1069. So I will, I guess I won't hand it over to staff, I'm going to, if somebody has a motion on item 5.4.
I move we table the item until a date certain that staff would provide us.
That would be the next meeting, September 5.
Second the motion to move the item to September 5.
Question?
Question?
Are we under deadline that this has to be approved by, back to the state by a certain date?
It's a great question. Technically, we were under the deadline on January 1st of this year, but as was mentioned earlier, the, if the city were to receive requests for ADUs tomorrow, next week, up until the, if the ordinance goes through and is adopted by council, we would be obligated to adhere to the state requirements as situated and stipulated, excuse me, it's been a long night, stipulated in the, in the state code, so, no, there is no, we do need to get the ordinance done, but is it imperative to do it tonight, to move forward to the city council tomorrow? No.
Thank you.
We have motion and a second to table, I believe?
We do, so I'm going to go ahead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
All right, there we go. So that passes?
Yes, you oppose. That's correct.
So...
So for the, for the record, was that a vote in?
Oppose.
In oppose, thank you.
All right, so that passes, that motion passes 3-1. All right, so moving on to item, to item six, matters from commissioners and staff, so matters from commissioners? Any, all right, seeing none? Matters from staff?
Two, two things to bring up tonight. One is the information for two public hearing items that will be heard on the 5th. I, I have those available for you to pick up as you leave tonight. Not knowing how the items were going to be handled tonight, I did not prepare an agenda for that evening, the 5th, but now I know that some items will be continued, I'm glad I did not. So that will be coming to you. If it, if I could poll the members here, I don't think it's going to trigger you to come down to the carry house to pick up those. We'd be happy to mail them, mail you the draft agenda and the minutes for tonight's meeting, if that would be appropriate, or if that's fine with you, we could certainly email them as well. It's, how would, how would each of you like?
Less paper, if you can email it, less cost.
Is, is that okay with the crowd, or would you like one mailed to you? Email, okay. Second is the vacant seat we have on the commission tonight. The city clerk has set with council's approval, the Monday, August 28th, 6:00 PM, in this building, will be the interviews for the vacant planning commission seat, and I believe Director Rebus, there were four applicants, is that correct? Four.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. All right, I think, any other comments, closing?
Just a couple of status reports, one on the Hampton Inn and Suites. Staff has had meetings with the project proponents, and we are expecting to get submittal of the building plans, hopefully sometime within the next two weeks. Regarding the parklet that was approved for, to occupy the spot just east of the ball bout on the north side of Main Street, in front of Queakside Place, there was an issue regarding the contractual requirements of El Dorado County, and so basically what we're working on now is a, it'll be a memorandum of understanding between the county and the city, and the city would be implementing the construction of the parklet. The construction will take place off-site, and then it'll be installed and assembled on-site, and then turned over to the county public health for O and M. They would operate, own and maintain the parklet for its duration. Because of the timing of all this, we probably won't expect to see a, see the city actually enter into an agreement with, with the contractor that'll construct the parklet, probably not until September, and so we mainly, mainly would expect to see the parklet installed hopefully this year, maybe it'll be only in a month, and then we would then reissue the temporary use permit next spring. So that's sort of to give you what's been happening with, with the parklet. I'd like to also update you on what's called the Astoria Residential Subdivision. That is a 39-lot... That is a thirty-nine lot residential subdivision that was approved, oh gosh.
I don't remember. It's like before my employment.
Yeah, quite, quite a while ago. Anyways, it was originally called the Placerville Estates, and then the name was changed. Staff has met with some new project proponents that have acquired that property, and my last discussion with them, they are working on the improvement plans that they hope to submit probably within the next month. And so the city would start reviewing those improvement plans. We are making the assumption that they would bond for the improvements in order to final the map and record the map. So we're sort of happy about that. The Astoria Residential Subdivision will be accessed via Texerna off of Broadway. That is that property that has been rough graded just below the airport.
Right. Okay. Sorry. Just curious about single-family residential permits, new permits for new homes. Are there any?
Yes, quite, quite a few. In fact, the Rids at Orchard Hill continues to develop out, and in fact, in the discussions that I've had with the contractor that's building those homes, he's, can't build them fast enough. They actually, many of them will sell before they're actually finalized and received a certificate of occupancy. I believe the Escaton is completing the construction of homes on six remaining lots.
Full buildout.
And it'll be full buildout. And it's my understanding as well that those units are, have sold even before they've been constructed and received their certificate of occupancy. And we've had a number of independent homes built on Thompson Way, for example. There were two homes built on a couple lots, side by side. It's my understanding that those homes are both sold. And then there is, I believe, eight lots at the Cedar Bluffs, at the end of, yeah, what's the name of that road there?
Brendan.
Brendan Way. Yeah, Brendan and Shawn. We have some lots there that are, that, that was phase one of the Cedar Bluffs. The Cedar Bluffs subdivision also included fifty-eight additional lots, but that map has expired, so only the phase one could be built. But those are building out as well, and they get, they are sold before they're completed. From my understanding and talking to people in the real estate industry is that we are, we have a very strong lack of housing. We are not meeting the demand. Our supply is in short supply.
As an addition to that, there was a member of the audience tonight, in fact, two members, who we anticipate receiving a building permit, you know, submittal for plan check for two new homes on lots that they own in the city, and that's, we expect that tomorrow. So it's happening. And that's Cindy and Mickey, who are here in the audience this evening.
The Stadium Club is being, something's being rebuilt there. I assume it doesn't come to us, because the use is the same, right?
It is the same for same. They basically have repaired that structure that was damaged due to fire. And then, of course, right next door to it, the, I'm trying to remember the name of it, Hangtown Indoor Shooting Range, that, it's ongoing, the permit has been issued for that use as well. But Mr. Painter was referring to SD Estates.
SD Estates, yeah.
And eleven lots were purchased, and we're going to get the building permits for homes on two of those lots.
Just, just as an aside, this, we've, we here at the Development Services Department, on our website, there is a link to current development projects, where we try to keep that as up-to-date as possible. There are links in reference to a comment made earlier. We often reference exhibits that are submitted by, by an applicant, and we relay in our public notice usually to, to either that page or the planning commission's page where the agenda's listed, as mentioned by Commissioner Friend and et cetera. So if you're ever curious about development, and you may have heard of wind of some, some submittal, you know, feel free to find that, or I can send the links to you, and you'll have that at your, at your disposal. So I offer that, and offer that for our great listening audience and viewership out there.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Pierre. Anything else? All right, then we stand adjourned for this evening. Thank you.